The Gadigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Julia Finn and I'm Chair of the Committee. We also have a number of members of the Committee online today. The only other member in the room with me is Mr Anderson. But I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege appraised to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, that does not apply to what witnesses say outside the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for all inquiry process events. And I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome and thank you for making the time to give evidence. Could each witness, actually I'll start online and then continue in the room rather than left to right. Please state your names and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation. So yes, starting with you, Dr Kruger.
Tingri, hi, I am Dr Candice Kruger, Yugan bear elder and songwoman. And my position is lecturer at Griffith University in the School of Education and Professional Studies. I solemnly, the affirmation, I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Professor Chitam Freyong?
Hello, I'm Deborah Chitam Freyong. I am the Elizabeth Todd Chair of Vocal Studies at the Conservatorium of Music in Sydney, part of the University of Sydney, and Artistic Director of Short Black Opera. My affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would you like to start by making a short statement again with you, Ms Kruger?
Thank you. I have prepared a statement that I will just read to you. Nanyanari Candice, Kumbumari Nangi Nugi Jupambanyer. My name is Candice and I am a Kumbumari Nugi woman of the Gold Coast and Moreton Island. I'm giving evidence to you today from Yugan bear country. And I acknowledge that I'm speaking to you as you meet on Gadigal lands and I pay respects to other Indigenous persons in the room. I have volunteered to speak today as Yugan bear elder, songwoman and music educator of 27 years in the classroom, where I have always firmly believed in the right of every child to access the arts, in particular, classroom music. In relation to New South Wales, I was the Director of Music at a preparatory school at a leading boys' school in Sydney from 2002 to 2006, a period of five years. As a family, we were transferred to New South Wales by the Australian Defence Force. And as a Queensland-trained primary music educator, I had to make a decision to seek work within the private education sector because I knew there were no few jobs as a primary music educator in the New South Wales State Education System, and I needed to have employment. As a songwoman, I can speak about singing country alive. This is where we feel and are present in the places that we live and communities that we live amongst. As a classroom music educator, I can speak to my 27 years of experience and knowledge that every child has strengths. However, these are not easily recognised and it is important to value and celebrate our differences. And that means inclusivity of culture, inclusivity of the arts, and in particular, music, where we enjoy, experience and participate in the practice of music and the arts. Music allows everyone to enrich their lives. It makes me feel better, our young people feel better, and we gain and maintain skills and pride in who we are through music participation. I know the inclusion of cultural practice, for me this means within the arts or more specific, the music classroom is significant. It helps community, it helps students and it places value and understanding within the wider community for our future. Cultural practice also helps us with wellbeing, and this is inclusive of a song. We feel better when we know and understand and are able to voice our culture. To me, this means singing my culture alive. I hope through my answers to your questions with this hearing that I am able to help you to have some understanding of cultural music and the presence of music within our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. And Professor Chitam Freyong, do you have a statement?
I want to firstly thank and acknowledge Candice for that beautiful acknowledgement of her country and to the Gadigal people on whose land we're meeting today. People who poured their knowledge and their wisdom into this land for millennia through song and dance and painting and the narrative. I accepted the invitation to present evidence today before this committee because I feel that there's a great opportunity that we alone in the world as a country, as a nation can grasp. And that is to celebrate the longest continuing music practice in the world. In fact, the longest continuing everything in the world. But I zero in on music today because this is traditionally our way of knowing and understanding and giving meaning to everything in the world. As a Yorta Yorta woman and the descendant of a Ewan grandfather, my ancestors have sung their knowledge into the lands that they were born on and they have sung their knowledge into me. Like Candice, I was a music teacher in the classroom for more than 20 years. In my case, it was high school music. I was a graduate of the Sydney Conservatorium of Music with a Bachelor of Music Education. And from 1986 until very recently, I've spent a significant amount of time in the classroom and seen many changes. I've come here today to impress upon all those here the importance of music education to every child, but in particular to First Nations children. It's only 230-odd years of change that we've witnessed since a time when art and music was practised on a daily basis as a way of transferring and holding on to knowledge. As we say in Dangala Children's Choir, one of the groups that I lead, a song is not just a song. It's our way home. It's how we know we belong. And so I want to open up a conversation and answer your questions as thoroughly as I can and help us to grasp hold of this opportunity in our lifetime to celebrate in a way that we have yet to do in this country. The power of music and the arts and the essential nature of those to all children.
Thank you both so much for those really thoughtful opening statements. We'll go to questions, but I might just start with, what capacity do you think currently exists in the curriculum to ensure that appreciation of the connection between First Nations peoples here in New South Wales and music and songs in particular?
Would you like me to go first? Thanks. I've been studying, as all music teachers in New South Wales have been studying, the new curriculum for senior students that was handed down, I think on Monday or very, very recently. So I've been drilling into that as much as I possibly can in the time that I had before this hearing. And I feel that the changes are difficult to justify in many ways. Having taught high school music for something like 20 years in New South Wales and then for another year in Victoria back in 2006, I, as I mentioned before, saw a lot of change. But the current change in the curriculum for senior students is something that we'll have to look at very carefully. I think it's in a process of feedback that will be given to the New South Wales Education Standards Authority up until December the 20th, I think that feedback is open. And I'm sure it will be flooding in. I've had this wonderful privilege of not only working in the classroom with high school music students, teaching Course Two and Course One, but I've also had, more recently, quite a lot of experience at the primary school age. I don't consider myself an expert in primary school education, but I do consider myself an expert in music education. And what I've found is that the journey that a primary school student will take through their six years into high school does not afford enough opportunity to engage with music education. We could extend that to a conversation about all the arts, but I feel that in my time as a teacher since first starting out in 1986, the amount of time has diminished and diminished, and this is quite a serious problem. I feel as though there are a couple of insights that I can also bring as now a member of the faculty of the Sydney Conservatorium of Music. And I'm seeing specialist music teachers come through our doors and be provided with the best training we possibly can give. But the support for those teachers in the education system outside of the doors once they've graduated is not there. Now, I'm a product of public school education. I went to an all-girls high school. It was a public school just in my area. And at that time, in the 70s and the 80s, the amount of music that you would experience and formal music training that you would experience at a high school level was something quadrupled to what it is today. I really do believe that without that music education, I would not have been able to piece together the parts of my own identity which were missing for a very long time as a member of the Stolen Generations. I can confirm with you that it was music that led me home to those parts of my identity that had been missing for so long. That's a much longer story than I can tell in the answer to this question. But I guess the very short answer to your question is, is there enough? No, there most definitely needs to be more because we know, the science has been in for so long, that music alone can wire a child's brain for a more effective development. Once it is hardwired as a child, it remains for the rest of your life. It develops children's ability to communicate, not only through music, but verbally. Their literacy levels are higher. These are all things that we all desire. I don't question that for a moment in this room or for those on the screen. But I think what we haven't grasped is the fact that even though the science is 20, 30 years old of the benefits of music education from an early age and through to young adulthood, even though that science is 20 or 30 years old, look to the longest continuing music practice in the world, the longest continuing culture. How is it that First Nations people in Australia enjoy that position? Through the strength of knowledge gained through artistic practice.
Thank you. Dr Kruger, do you have anything you would like to add?
I do. Thank you, Deborah. That was an incredible answer. But I wanted to begin this with, you know, I was flooded with music in the 80s and the 90s as a child in Queensland in schools. It fueled my soul. My own children were in New South Wales public schools and they were not. It was missing in their identity and it was something that I had to give them. In terms of the curriculum, I believe that we actually need to address a larger problem before we address whether or not Indigenous music or Aboriginal music and how it is addressed in the curriculum. At this point in time, we fail to realise that the larger problem is ensuring that we are able to educate more Aboriginal people to become teachers. So to become music teachers in particular. If we're not having music in the classroom every day as part of our everyday lives, a part of the fabric of who we are, and if we're not actually able to make that happen, then how are we actually able to have Aboriginal people bring Aboriginal knowledges into this space? My doctoral thesis that I did a handful of years ago was actually on embedding Indigenous knowledges ready for teachers to take into the classroom because there is such a lack. I know in Queensland that Deborah's choral book, her Dangala choral book, is so highly regarded and so highly sought after. I myself, as Deborah takes her choir, I have volunteered my time for well over 10 years and have run the Yugan bear youth choir. Where Indigenous children from around the Gold Coast, Logan Scenic Rim and Northern New South Wales actually come flocking to me on Friday afternoons just so that they can learn some cultural practice through the arts, through music, through music-making, through stick tapping, through singing, through their breath, through engagement and through the didgeridoo for the young males. It is completely missing and lacking. I could be critical of Queensland as well in this state of Aboriginal music. For those young people that come from Northern New South Wales, it's missing within their classroom. So part of this bigger problem and how we address and is it enough in the curriculum? I'm not sure that I've answered your question correctly, but I need to let you know that before we can address the question of, is there enough music, Aboriginal music in the curriculum, we haven't actually addressed the point that enough Indigenous young people, Aboriginal people, are not actually getting access to music to become music teachers, to become proud of the music that's within their community and to be able to share those knowledges and resources. Therefore, I find that there is a need.
Okay, thank you. Mr Anderson?
Yeah, look, thank you. Firstly, Professor Chitam Freyong, thank you for your opening remarks. And I note your connection to Yorta Yorta. And of course, one of the great First Nations singer-songwriters was Jimmy Little. And we pay our respects to Jimmy and I had the pleasure of playing and performing with Jimmy on a number of occasions, yeah.
Wow, how wonderful.
It was a great thrill. It was a great thrill. So that was super special and thank you for recognising that. Just to you, Dr Kruger, you talked about some of the challenges there. Do you have suggestions to address those problems that you highlight, particularly in relation to the pathway for Indigenous or Aboriginal students to make their way into becoming an educator, if you like, in music? How do you address those concerns that you've just highlighted?
Do you know, in Queensland, we have the Aboriginal Centre for Performing Arts, ACPA. And I know that there are many young people who have gone through secondary education. And through primary and secondary, what they've actually done is connected to the community. They've actually been able to be a part of a dance troupe or a singing group or they're just a family that have been able to share and articulate and continue the oral practice of storytelling. I strongly recommend that every state actually is able to pull together a centre for Aboriginal studies in music. You know, when we think about what ACPA and the CASM in Adelaide actually do, they take young people on the journey through certificates, like a Cert, I suppose, three or a Cert four, things that can be done during school as well. And it allows growth in the field of Aboriginal embodied performativity. It actually, a part of the curriculum is to learn about style stylistically, to be able to sing, to be able to sing in language, the language of who you are. I have had young people who have gone through ACPA while they've been in choir or after they've left choir. And they've been able to be successful because there has been a community of practice within our Aboriginal community lines where they've been able to take knowledge and show and grow. So firstly, I think in education, we need to fix that. We need to have the space where Aboriginal young people can actually grow in music and the arts that is connected through tape or through university. And we need to actually be able to have this that is attached to schools, that is attached to music programmes in every space. In Queensland, in some of the schools, I have now placed with some community members didgeridoo, young men's didgeridoo groups. Who would have thought that the didgeridoo would have become a musical instrument as part of the instrumental programme? And the reason that that is successful and it works is because now we see those young men coming to school on those days. The same with cultural performativity groups where we're able to sing and dance in language. When I've placed those in schools and found community members that are able to come in and to work collectively, when we're singing Indigenous languages alive, all of a sudden, our young people come to school. So there is more than just gaining a music education. It is identity through music.
I understand and thank you for explaining that. Have you, like as an educator in that space for a long period of time, as you've highlighted, obviously the Department of Education doesn't provide that, hence the reasons why you are talking about the options and pathways. Is it about setting up a separate space or is it? And just to come back, and I'll come back to Professor Chitam Freyong in a moment, but of course you talked about raising some concerns within the curriculum. But the pathway, Dr Kruger, to getting more Aboriginals and more Indigenous people involved, is it a separate part of the curriculum or is the curriculum not doing enough?
It's both. The curriculum isn't doing enough and it should both be community-led and community-run on their terms as well as being within schools. The more, the better. We have an issue right across Australia of our young Indigenous people not, I guess you could read the closing of the GAC report yourself, but not enough young people completing Year 12 as a pathway to education for life. What we see is when we have these programmes in schools, whether it's language, song, arts, practice, anything, but music mainly, that is one of the most, we see young people turn up to school. What we've also noticed and what I've been able to actually pull off data and have done the research on, when young people, and Deborah will be able to speak to this as well because she will have anecdotal evidence, when our young people in their communities build a community of practice outside of school, they take that back into schools, they become more successful in English and science because they speak with other young people about how school is going. I now have two and a half medical doctors, the half, or she's actually three quarters now, coming out of my choir. I have a teacher. We have people in health practice. We have so many young people in really successful jobs because our community of practice has assisted what's been going on in schools. So I would say to you in this space, you need to support communities of practice that might rehearse in school spaces during school time or after school time. And also that you put music in place that actually invites Aboriginal musical instruments into, and that includes voice, into the music curriculum.
Well, didgeridoo is an incredible instrument. It should already be there in my view, but it's a very difficult instrument to play, like many instruments. But I'll just come back to you, Professor, briefly and thank you, Chair, for your indulgence. You were talking about the curriculum raising concerns for you. What are some of those concerns?
Well, I'm speaking particularly about Music Course One and Music Course Two. Music Course One is a more generalist music course which traditionally has attracted students who really want to focus on performance. And quite often that performance will be, but not always, but quite often that performance will be in a contemporary vein. Now, Music Course One, this is subject to feedback right now. So, you know, this is a draft document which probably people are only just getting their head around and drilling into. But Music Course One now is, in its assessment, will be far less performance-based and more theory-based. So almost, I think, if I'm reading this correctly, something like 50% of the assessment for that course now will be a written exam rather than the weight being on performance. There are also some other restrictions that I'll table this and, well, I don't need to, it's online and you can take a look in time so that you can make your assessment. But I think the change here, it will disadvantage students who would, and music departments where they rely on students taking Music Course One to keep their music department alive. Music Course Two, more specialists, these are students who you would expect to go on to university. They may study music at university, they may go on to some other avenue of study. But Course One was a really grassroots course. And the changes, I fear that it will have a lasting effect for music departments as well as the students who would have taken that course. Now, curriculum isn't developed in a void. We know this. There has been a lot of expertise that's flowed into it. But I think at this time, the feedback will be essential to look at. That's my concern in that regard. I think there's just not enough time, there's not enough time for children at early education engaging with music. And we need specialists. We need specialists there. And I think what Candice is saying is exactly to the point that if we have organisations like, I'd add AB Music to that from Western Australia as well, Candice, to your list, and CASM and ACPA in Queensland. If we can have a specialist music programme for First Nations children, they are learning in a culturally empowered space. They can then take that back in their careers, back into a broader education system. And I think, you know, we are benefiting all of the community there. I feel very strongly what benefits First Nations children benefits all children in this country. And I bring it back to the point that music is essential for our identity. So where that is absent, we are further disadvantaged in terms of developing our full identity and our full potential.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone online have any questions?
I'll ask one, a quick one. It's Liza Butler, South Coast. I apologise that I'm not on screen. I'm driving to Sydney for the Business Awards. I just have a question if there's any mapping being done on for non-Indigenous children as well as Indigenous children that have had access to First Nations music from a young age? If there's documented that any benefits to them?
Well, I would say music is music. So the benefits of music, whatever genre it happens to be, whatever community it comes from, yes, there's a wealth of information about that. And First Nations music fits into that as, you know, rap, pop, opera, whatever you like. It fits into that. But I would also say that Dr Anita Collins is somebody that I would point you in her direction, the science around it.
She's appeared as a witness.
Yeah, so music is music. The benefit of music, whether it's coming from Indigenous people, non-Indigenous people, is, the science is the same. But what I would say for Australia, for us to reach a point of emotional maturity where we do grasp hold of that opportunity, I began my remarks with, we grasp hold of the opportunity to know and celebrate that we have the longest continuing music practice in the world, what confidence that would give us as a nation? I think that First Nations music being amongst the repertoire and embedded in the curriculum, allowing access to that for every child, for every student, will only serve to strengthen our sense of our own belonging in this nation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Dr Kruger, do you want to add to that?
Could I add an anecdote? I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Candice, because you did say that I would have anecdotal evidence. And I do two very quick things. One, I run a programme, Short Black Opera. One, I run a program, Short Black Opera for Kids. Kids have no bias against opera, not like sometimes adults think opera, not for me. Kids, they just love it, their whole lives are operas, they just sing their whole reality. Ever been on a long trip with a kid in the back of the car? They make up their whole life in song, it's fantastic. That course that I run is for First Nations children and they come out of school, their schools support them to come out and work with me for five mornings and we put on a show at the end of it. The number of non-Indigenous kids that I have sneaking into that program, and, you know, maybe I shouldn't use that word, but it's for Indigenous kids, but the non-Indigenous kids who want to come and be part of that program every single year. And I don't reject them. If they want to be there, I want to help connect them with music and with First Nations culture and language, which is what we do. The second anecdote is something a little more of the serious side. Dangala Children's Choir began 16 years ago. In fact, we just had our sweet 16 celebration on Yorta Yorta Country. When we began that choir 16 years ago, there were no members of the choir, and there were 30 children, no members of the choir who had parents who had finished high school or siblings who had finished high school. That has turned around in the northern Victorian city of Shepperton, which is part of Yorta Yorta Country, straddles both New South Wales, Victoria. That has turned around in that 16 years and we have seen those children in the choir not only completing school themselves, their siblings are completing school, their parents have gone back to school. They've remained connected to this choir and music has fed them in a way that every person in Australia needs. But as First Nations people, they identified that need, they identified that hunger, they connected to the choir and it has had a remarkable, a remarkable effect on that community.
Does it help the non-Aboriginal people in the community to better understand the connection to land when they are part of the choir and constantly going over the stories about that connection?
Absolutely. Look, a lot of music that I've written as a composer and presented just a couple of weeks ago here at the Sydney Opera House, Sydney Symphony Orchestra, Philharmonia Choirs, Dangala Children's Choir and Soul, including myself. The majority of people on that stage are non-Indigenous. I would say 90% non-Indigenous people. But performing a work 80 minutes long in a First Nation, in Gundichumara dialects, a First Nations language of southwestern Victoria, without fail, whenever we've performed this work or many others that I've written in First Nations languages, people will come to me and say, this is helping me connect in a way that I was afraid to do. I didn't want to get it wrong. But through music, I'm learning, I'm connecting and I feel more courageous about establishing relationships with First Nations people. That happens time and time again.
And Dr Kruger, do you want to add anything at this point?
I do. Deborah and I can speak from two same same experiences. What, when a seven-year-old Aboriginal child can say to me after a performance at a large event for dignitaries, for a governor general, just taught people something that they didn't know about my culture, it concerns me, but I'm proud. It concerns me because we're not doing this in schools. But I'm so proud of young people that can recognize their own agency, their own voice, the fact that they have a voice. In fact, the question that came earlier about how does this, when non-Indigenous children learn Indigenous music, Aboriginal music, it speaks to culturally nourishing schooling, it's exactly what it is. It's the pedagogy of practice. It is that we're enriching everyone's lives. But beyond enriching everyone's lives, when we teach non-Indigenous children through music, all about culture, we actually bring acceptance, we actually remove racism. We actually are building a better community and society for the future. It shocks me all the time when I speak to communities right around my region, when I do performativity, welcome to countries, then embodied cultural performance, I will talk about suburb names, about the fact that, you know, 60% of the suburbs or creek names or river names around the region where I live are all Aboriginal words and that people didn't realize that they actually have been speaking Aboriginal language. When our kids in schools, and we are doing better, I must say we are doing better in this space, but we have a long way to go. When the young people can talk to each other about this and share information, pride, a sense of who I am and a sense of that I'm allowed to be who I am comes through. And so to answer the question before, it is beneficial for non-Indigenous children to learn these knowledges as well. But I, like Deborah, I ensure that my choir is for Aboriginal and because I'm in Queensland and Torres Strait Islander, First Nations young people. And there is a reason for that because they haven't had this opportunity and they must have the opportunity to learn. That's why I say perhaps a musical instrument that isn't Western should be placed in to your instrumental programs. That's why I call for, and I've been thinking about it while you've been sitting here, why are we not throwing money at the Sydney Conservatorium? To actually invest in large research project, to work with Aboriginal people, to develop music education resources? Because that is what we need to do. We need to work with our communities and say, what songs would you like taught to both your young people and the broader community? This ensures that we maintain connection to country. This ensures that when we maintain connection to country, that we actually understand and maintain our own identity as well. I hope that assists with answering that question.
Great. And does anybody else online have a question?
Could I just ask a couple of questions, Chair? Joe McGur here. And thank you, Dr Kruger and Professor Chita Fayon. Thank you very much for coming in and providing evidence. I'm dialing in from Wagga Wagga, so I'll just acknowledge that I'm on Warradri land. I have two questions and for either, for both of you. First relates to an institution called Clontarf, which I have three Clontarf academies in my electorate, one in Chibit and two in high schools in Wagga. They are very effective, it's my impression, they are very effective in improving attendance rates and course completion at school. And they have traditionally used sport as a way of attracting, I suppose, or providing an incentive to students. But I have recently become aware that music is also a possible attractor for First Nations people who participate in Clontarf academies. And I'm just wondering if either of you have any knowledge or experience of the use of that, either in Clontarf or beyond Clontarf, as a way of helping people complete schooling? So that's one, and I've got a second one, but that one first.
Can I speak to this one?
Yes, sure.
Yes, thank you. So I am aware of Clontarf and I have experience with Clontarf and both the ARDI program and the Beyond Broncos program, which mirror and are similar to Clontarf, but not to the extent of Clontarf. Look, some of these, the other programs have now moved, while they are based in sport and that is how they came about, the educators and the tutors and the advocates that come out and work with our young people, yes, we are seeing they are excellent programs and we are actually seeing an increased attainment, year twelve attainment for our students. But we are also beginning to see through art practice and music practice and culture therapy, I guess you could call it, we are actually seeing a greater uptake. So where the, let's say for example, the ARDI program, I've seen it in the Clontarf as well, where instead of bringing out some sports, famous brought people to, or Indigenous people to speak to the young people, they're also bringing out arts practitioners. And the kids are learning and learning with dance and they're learning with song. You know, they might bring out someone, in Queensland they might bring someone from Bangarra. I have actually gone out to some schools and done some work with song myself. It is, students are highly receptive to it, it is greatly successful. And when I spoke earlier about being able to place then some didgeridoo groups or some singing groups or some dance groups into schools with local community Indigenous people that have been able to then take that up and actually work with students in those schools, that has all been a part of and out of what we've been able to see and model on the success of Clontarf or ARDI or Broncos as well. So yes, it is very successful.
Thank you.
Professor Chitam Frean, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I'd just add also, although it probably doesn't need to be said here, but music and sport are not mutually exclusive. And I think that, you know, you look at those great NRL, those AFL players, the sportsmen and women that we've celebrated First Nations for decades, for centuries actually now, they were singers, they were dancers, they were painters. It may not be what they did to earn their living, but it was part of who they were and their cultural identity. So I think in institutes like Clontarf, the idea that music is also a stream that's offered is so very important. Or the arts in general, I would say. And this is the thing, you know, the arts in First Nations culture were not siloed. I don't know about you, but when I went through high school, I had to choose music or visual arts. They were in competing streams. I would have taken both had I had the choice. Because in traditional culture, the singer is the dancer, the dancer is the painter, the painter is the storyteller. These things are indivisible. So I just want to make the point because there has been, and there is in Australia, a great love of our sporting heroes. But the arts and media industry is a much bigger earner if we were just to come down to dollars and cents and the economy, much larger than sport. So it's really important to also acknowledge that these are career opportunities we're talking about here. Yes, certainly all of the development of identity and of, all of the things that Candice and I have spoken about. But also, these are career paths and these are ones that can give you a solid, you know, path to earning a living for the rest of your life. And where First Nations people quite naturally excel at the arts because it's part of our culture and our DNA for millennia, then we need to see that advantage through education.
Thank you very much.
So can I just, so thank you Chair, just that actually is a nice segue to my second question, which is, I am fortunate enough to attend a number of events where we have a welcome to country. Often it's a smoking ceremony, but often it will be a dance. Now, it's a great event because it brings together music, rhythm, dance, song, and of course, to extend the artistic analogy a bit further, you know, for want of a better word, makeup, but the markings, you know, the painting and the costume, so there's a whole event happens there. And I think that brings together Professor Chita Fayon, what you were saying about siloed activity, you know, and bringing it together. It's not, you know, that sort of performance and dancing isn't something associated with my schooling or Western culture. My question, so it's good to have, but my question is, it doesn't, when, and it's usually schoolchildren who do it, but they don't usually do it in connection with the school, it's usually done by a group outside the school. And I sometimes wonder about the level of education associated with that. I mean, it's a lot of fun, it looks great, I think it would be of enormous educational value. The kids, young people seem to identify with it, so all that's good. But I don't get a sense it's part of a formal school curriculum. And I'm wondering, I'm just wondering if you've got any reflections on the potential for that? Whether there are in fact courses available to teachers to develop that as a skill and so on?
If I could just answer to that, I, sorry, I've lost my train of thought because there's just so many little nuanced points there. What, I'll just perhaps give you an anecdotal story, it just might be easy to explain. I have seen children who have not been incredible at English, who, let's say for example, in year ten and year eleven have never cracked, let's say, a 20 out of 25 in a final written piece. But the moment that they've been able to, in their formal writing, being able to bring something of their culture in, and I've got four or five examples that I'm happy to speak to anyone offline about, these senior students, the moment they were able to bring their identity, which this is the language and the oral storytelling that comes through singing, song, knowledges. Once they've been able to bring that in, those students have gotten 24s and 25s in senior English, something that they hadn't been able to do before. Because it relates to the uniqueness of our oral traditions, of our storytelling. So music in particular, even though we've had to practice it outside of schools, has been able to come directly in and into arts, into music and into other areas like sciences, like humanities, because they have this knowledge and they're able to speak about it. So that's why when we're seeing it from outside, it's important to come in. Look, I have another little anecdotal story that I wanted to share just quickly based on the part one of your question. Sorry, and I'm not bragging, but it was pretty cool. When I got to teach the Wallabies how to sing the National Anthem in Yuguen Bear language, that was the moment where sport and music really collided for me. When we was, and so the Wallabies learned to sing and these men had powerful voices because many of them have rich cultural backgrounds and they were so proud to be able to do something for their first Aboriginal Wallabies player whose language was Yuguen Bear and then and honor him, but also for the wider community. Our kids came in and saw their heroes and sang along beside them and recognized that they're sporting heroes, had incredible voices and wanted to do something amazing with culture. When we took that to the actual stadium, more than 1,500, 2,000 people of the, let's say, 35,000 people that were there actually stood up and sang the Yuguen Bear anthem in language with us, not just standing quietly. Because since 2011, the Queensland Parliament has actually formally accepted the National Anthem in Yuguen Bear language, which means I've been out there teaching music teachers who have then been teaching schools and the kids, more than 20,000 kids in our region sing the National Anthem in Yuguen Bear because it's accepted by parliament, it's accepted by teachers and it helps us with identity and language. It also means that when you have knowledge through music, through singing, through learning, that we can then take all of that knowledge into other subjects. And that's actually being done in schools, not outside of schools. Thank you.
And just very briefly, Professor Chitam Frean, do you have anything to add before we wrap up?
No, I think that it's a privilege to witness the knowledge of millennia that is, that is performed in ceremony when we see welcome to country and of course acknowledgement to country is something quite different. And where you're seeing, where you're seeing that ceremony performed by children, this is knowledge that's being handed on from grandparent to parent to child and it's a beautiful thing to watch. And I think any chance you have to encourage and to invite those groups to give their welcome to country to events that you're holding, then that just strengthens not only First Nations identity, but the identity of all Australians. Because once again, I say we can lay claim to the longest continuing cultures in the world.
Not sure where that noise is coming from, somebody needs to put themselves on mute. Thank you very much for your time this afternoon and your evidence. The secretary will contact you in relation to any questions on notice. But yeah, thank you again, it's been really very, very helpful.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. And thanks for your work.
Thanks Candice. Bravo you.
Lovely. Thank you very much.
Agreed to appear this afternoon and welcome and thank you for taking the time to give evidence to the inquiry. Uh could each witness, starting from my left, so Mr. Petkovich, um please state your name and position, title and swear either an O for an affirmation.
Hi, I'm Richard Petkovich. Um I'm the Director of Cultural Arts Collective and Arts Practice in Western Sydney. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given be me by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr. Overton?
Uh Andrew Overton, I'm the Chair of Sacred Currents Inc. Um I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare the affirmation that the evidence now that I about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would you like to start by making a short statement?
Sure.
Yep.
Yep. Uh thanks. Thanks very much. Um we're just gonna do it as a tandem. Um so I grew up in Western Sydney. I'm a Western Sydney artist. Um created something called the Cultural Arts Collective, which is about creating art and music and cultural projects in Western Sydney to showcase the innovation and uh amazing multicultural talent we have in Western Sydney. Um I started as a um a Western Sydney person with basically no education, joined a rock band, um wondered what I was gonna do with my life. Um I was lucky enough to get a traineeship in community arts and cultural development, um which enabled me to learn about these two amazing things, which is working with community and also my interest in creativity. So um that was in the nineteen nineties. Um and that enabled me to work in Western Sydney with many culturally diverse communities to facilitate um not only community building opportunities, but really interesting music using those um with those communities. Um in twenty eleven, I started the Sydney Sacred Music Festival, which was a opportunity to showcase the amazing talents we have in our culturally diverse communities, but also I'd realised that post-September eleven, that religion had become the new cultural wars. So I wanted to provide a space where um artists from different religion, cultural backgrounds could create new music, uh new art, whatever projects together. And that's now morphed into the Culture X Festival, which happens every year, um about showcasing culturally diverse innovative uh music. In twenty fourteen, I created the Sacred Currents Incorporated, a non-for-profit organisation uh to run the festival using community cultural development principles. I'm not on the board. Um but I volunteer and a part-time worker on that um in that um organisation to create these projects that we're doing now. One of them is the Culture X Festival, the other one is Hit Factory Music Residencies, bringing culturally diverse artists together to create new music and create the next generation of culturally diverse um artists. We're doing the South of Sydney Touring Circuit, which is about supporting culturally diverse artists in the regions and in Western Sydney to tour and to support the independent organisations um running live music venues in the regions and doing many other projects like that. And I'll now hand over to our Chair of Sacred Currents, Andrew.
Thank you. Um I'd just like to support some of Richard's um um discussion there. It's all about building that pathway between uh formal education and being prepared for or job-ready for for musicians. Um we've worked strongly on a path for that to happen. You know, in nineteen eighty-seven, I was eighteen-year-old in growing up in Parramatta. I had to go to, had to travel to uh to to places like Paddington and uh Balmain for my formal arts education. And you know, if we fast forward thirty-seven years later, I think Lidor has changed. You know, that post-school education to improve skills and professional development uh still remains very limited. And um you know, the current offerings that are basically uh offered by the region's art centres and independent organisations are there, but there isn't any meaningful sort of pathway for these artists or musicians. Um I was fortunate enough in two thousand and five to initiate the Parramatta Artist Studios. And the capacity that project has gone on for the last twenty years now has produced um a good body of artists that will eh have that professional capacity to be able to uh enter the world stage. And we'd like that opportunity for for uh for musicians, particularly from culturally diverse backgrounds, uh to have that same sort of model. That that bridge between formal education and being able to be a part of industry with um skills and 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 experience. And the model we proposed in our um submission does look at the Hit Factory idea. It's a name, but it could be anything. It is a a facility that basically drives that uh support for emerging um musicians, particularly from culturally diverse backgrounds within Western Sydney, to be able to take that next point of um delivery for them. Often they come out of um art school or um uh doing a music course and still not being able to have that capacity to be able to um hit the mark. And um I was very, very fortunate to see a number of artists from the Parramatta Artist Studios, for instance, um giving the first show at the uh the New Sydney Modern at Art Gallery in New South Wales. So it does show that with a bit of support and a bit of encouragement and a bit of um mentorship, these artists could could be on a stage. Thank you.
No, thank you. Uh does anybody have any questions?
Well, I'll start. So if you're a uh young person from a culturally diverse background uh with uh uh some musical ability, wh- what are what are the options for you currently? Like what does that look like in terms of moving from uh you know, perhaps doing music at school to trying to uh find your way to being a professional musician? What what what's the pathway look like at the moment?
At the moment, it's pretty random, I think. Um there's a lot of um culturally diverse instrument workshop uh lessons happening in suburban houses and in different areas. Like a friend of ours, Mahashi Raval, has a place in Harris Park that he runs um runs tabla lessons out of. There's the same with every culture. There's the singers, the the instrument players, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's all pretty um random is kind of uh the word, and it's based on the level of mastery of the person running those um running those lessons. So and I think the other thing is about the lack of awareness of what we have in our suburbs in regards to these cultures and these um pathways. Um currently, there is no, besides the work we're doing, um and it's not only us, but we do a lot, there's no one sort of pushing the boundaries of what contemporary Australian might include. So our our vision is really about a culturally diverse music industry world renowned for its innovative music practice and inclusive practice. Uh yeah, innovative music and inclusive practice. So the inclusive thing is the really thing that I think we're missing. Now, it's like me, I randomly, you know, played in a band and then found this thing over there, then found it and nutted out a a a pathway for myself just out of luck and got, you know, lack of, besides that uh training that I talked about earlier. But if you're a young person, you're playing and you're not in the mainstream, there are limited opportunities um to, one, practise your cultural heritage, which is really important for identity, social cohesion, or two, to take that the next step in in creating and being an innovative musician, if that answers your question.
Yeah, and so what kind of spaces are currently available to perhaps uh? I mean, there's a lot of assets there in terms of Western Sydney, in terms of our cultural diversity and uh the kind of artistic uh capability that's sort of latent in the community. How do we bring those assets together to create something new?
Well, you know, I think that's the um that's the opportunity that we've been working on for the last fifteen years really, um not having uh a funding source to work with with that opportunity, you know. It's really our vision that that it's a latent industry. There is, it's undocumented basically, it's um and it's unknown. So you know, in every every suburban background, like you know, I know Afghani recording studios that are working with Afghani musicians, they've got uh the singers coming, they're producing new music, they're producing product. That's a financial, that's an economic indicator that it's something happening in their community. You think about the Chinese, the same thing's hap- every cultural background's got their own little garage industry going on. I know artists that are um not only teaching their own kids and whatnot in Indian music, but they're working as producers in Bollywood. Who knows about that? So it's a real, we ran a project that was um Australia Council funded in twenty twenty-two about trying to map some of these um, you know, it was a small project, but we did what we can about mapping these cultural assets. You know, it's like any organisation, you run a, you map your assets so you can work out how best to utilise that. Well, the music industry hasn't mapped it. It's unmapped, it's a an opportunity that I think with a bit of facilitation and producing could not only help build and include culturally diverse communities into all these mainstream facilities, but also create new music that create new product that could create a Western Sydney sound.
Yeah, so like, I mean, how do we create sort of like the next Chinese AC/DC in in Western Sydney? That's that's kind of, is that what you're talking about?
Hundred percent. And it's really about
Fans come out of Western Sydney.
What's that?
Actually, no, they might have come out of Melbourne. We've had K-pop.
Yeah, that's right. That's one three hundred. They're a great example. Young Korean, young people doing they're on Triple J, but how do they get there? Who knows? It's a one-off. But I believe via this product, this idea that we're talking about, and we've, you know, it's it's basically a community music hub. But we're calling it the Hit Factory just to say, let's, because as soon as you use the word community or multicultural, everybody goes, oh, that's that's lesser or what I'm, what we're saying is that that's where the innovation is at. That's the thing that not only can fire up music education because as you probably already have heard before, that music education is on the on the decrease. People, less and less people are taking up music degrees. The way I see it is because it's a lack of innovation, a lack of inclusion and a lack of excitement. And I think having a facility like the Hit Factory or a community music hub that has professional development outcomes, has capacity building outcomes and has education outcomes, and then becomes a pillar for not only the local community, but can radiate into larger music industry.
How do you think that works at the school level? Say if there are um high school kids who you know, they want to learn tabla or some other non-Western instrument as their thing for their HSE music or um you know, perform. That's, I don't think it's, you know, I could be wrong, but I don't think the barriers are as bad in dance. But how do you think that they would navigate doing that? Do you think they could?
Well, you know, I think that most artists from culture, most young people from culturally diverse, if they're in a private school, they go into the Western classical canon.
Hmm.
Because it's well-resourced in private schools, there's there's pathways. In the public school, my son is going for year nine electives and they're saying to him, they're not sure there's gonna be a music class because of the numbers. So and that's him just playing a standard piano. What about if, because I know there's other young kids who play uh Indian instruments in his, then eh there's not a pathway for it. There's not the resource for it, if that answers your question.
And I suppose the the outcome we're we're chasing with a hub, a community hub, these artists can actually come together and a part of their response will be the professional opportunity for these artists to actually go into schools. It's a, will be a ready resource of of artists who know the the practice, they understand the educational uh outcomes. And they could go in, for instance, go into schools and offer those um um opportunities.
Provide that resource that's not there currently. It's an ecosystem where I think that needs to be, that is, that needs to be built. Like the the resources are there, but nobody's gone, let's put it, let's put some resourcing around it and let's make this, there's there's no vision for it really.
Thanks Chair, um and thank you. Uh when you talk about no vision for it, there's no appetite for it either within the Education Department. Is that, is that a challenge, do you think?
I I think they they, teachers are smart people. They see the opportunities, but they're so, in the public system, I can only talk about the public system. I think they're under-resourced. You know all this, you've heard all this before. They're under-resourced, they haven't got the necessary skills out of their training. How can they train an Indian tabla player? They can train a horn player. My son's in a big band playing horns, but he's not in a band that's working with his Indian mate and his Chinese mate to create something new, if you know what I mean, because they don't have that capacity.
How do you fix that?
Community music hubs.
But what about through the school curriculum? What about, you know, coming into high school, seven, nine, ten, eleven? Eh give getting them exposed, but then to get them exposed, you need the teachers to be able to have the time and the capability and the capacity to do that. Uh do they not have that now? And how do you give them that time?
Yeah, I can't speak for the education system. I'm not in that. I'm in the community world and and the music industry, but um you know, I know of models in England where they've, you know, they've made all piano players um work off a certain curricula where it's taught you a Kurdish song, a Chinese song, a this song or that song in the high school system. So that's part of that process that I think you're talking about and having the right resources for that. And via the piano, that's possible. The wider thing about, you know, it's again, it's about the vision. Do we all believe that a multicultural nation creates something as innovative and specifically Australian? I think that's the core of what's possible in our society if you have the vision.
Hmm, agreed. Thanks Chair.
Does anyone online have any questions?
Yes. Uh Chair Joe McGur here, Roga Boga. Uh Mr. Petkovich and Mr. Overton, thanks very much for your uh uh appearing here and for the information you've provided to us. Um Andrew Overton, you mentioned your training thirty-seven years ago, you went from Parramatta to Paddington.
Yep.
Uh for your training. Uh and I think you made it really, it wasn't much different. I'm actually interested in what does happen to people who wish to pursue further education in music or performance of some sort in Western Sydney. What facilities are there? And I suppose what's linked to that is um if they are there, if there are some resources there, um you seem to be suggesting that they're pretty locked into the Western canon, that there might not be many resources locked into the Western canon and not really reflective perhaps of what's the reality of cult, the cultural environment. Now, I know I want to put words in your mouth, but can you comment on that, or either of you comment on that? Uh what postgraduate educational or career development or formal opportunities there are and how they relate to this issue of multicultural or culturally diverse music?
Certainly. Um there are, there are some organisations, independent organisations in within uh Western Sydney, uh I have knowledge of. Plus the uh the major art centres through Campbelltown, Penrith um and Blacktown. They do support it, but a lot of it's all based on project-based funding. So there isn't that core opportunity to actually continue and have that continual sort of um uh response to 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 these opportunities around music education and and visual arts education for that matter. It's all reliant on this project-based funding. If there was opportunity to look in over a three-year programme or a five-year programme to see those outcomes, I think that would be stronger. And again, it's about the practical training as well. Um look, I I liken it to my daughter just recently. She uh wanted to do horse equine training. There's there's one face-to-face course in 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 New South Wales at the moment, and that's Tokal College. Uh the rest is all online. How 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 do you learn about horse behaviour? How do you learn about the rider and the horse um connection through an online programme? Again, with contemporary musicians, there has to be that elevation of opportunity and of practice that they become familiar with and they form this relationship with people about the mentoring and the skills and the opportunity moving forward. It takes it from that formal education part or where where that leaves off to a a new area that's job-ready, you know. Um they want to be that musician, they want to be that person who appears on on the festival stage. You know, um from the research we did uh recently, we know that over eighty percent of uh festival acts in Australia are are all white acts. They don't see that uh cultural inclusivity. They don't see that um particularly culturally diverse artists, they don't see that on stage or anywhere. They don't see that, um, particularly culturally diverse artists, they don't see that on stage or anywhere. And they're sort of saying, well, where is my opportunity? I, I want to do this and I want to be a part of it, but they don't see themselves as a part of it or the opportunity or the bridge that is not there for them.
Yep. No, thank you for that. Thank you.
Are there any further questions, um, online or?
I was gonna say, uh, so, uh, this committee did a, a side visit to the, uh, Hume, uh, concert, uh, Conservatorium. And, uh, it was, uh, it was evident that, that that, uh, organisation was able to sort of cluster the kind of musical community, uh, within the Golden area. Uh, and one of the programs that they were running was, so by bringing the, uh, musical community together, there was obviously some, uh, synergies that are generated out of that process. Uh, one of those, uh, sort of, um, functions of the conservatorium was to provide, uh, music tutors that would go into schools. Do you think there's opportunities, uh, to have a similar kind of program running around culturally diverse music tutors going into schools and maybe offering sitar at Pendle High or, you know, like, uh, is that something that, uh, you think there's, there'd be an appetite for or opportunities for?
I think so. Like, you know, having young kids that go to school, they're, they're learning African songs, for instance, because it's culturally diverse. But they're learning from a non-African person and they're learning an African song that was created in America. Do you know what I mean? Like, so imagine if there was a First Nations model, that would never happen. So I think we've got to go down in regards to education and inclusion, that, that same model of getting, getting the amazing Indian tabla player to visit those schools. Not only adds, um, you know, an economic benefit for him, it adds cultural value and then inspires that audience as well. And I think, you know, you're talking about the conservatorium model and we're not too far away talking about, you know, what we're calling the Hit Factory thing. Like if we had one in Western Sydney with those, that education model, as you talked about, there could be outreach. But not only do, uh, it's an entry point for, uh, culturally diverse communities into the mainstream or into a system, into the industry, but also provides, uh, further education for those facilitators or, or tutors as well. I know Mahashi Raval, an amazing, uh, tabla player as I mentioned earlier, I don't, he hasn't got a cert for or, or whatever, or he needs to have a masters in music in, in, uh, from, you know, from his practice that crosses over. So there's, there's, uh, those, um, professional development opportunities for artists as well as cultural products, uh, cultural learnings for the schools and the, and whatnot. So I think the conservatory and what Golden Dove has been a great thing. Because in what I remember is that conservatories used to play Western classical music, but part of our South of Sydney touring circuit, we're touring to Gold, we played the Golden Club on Friday night. The support band was a local bluegrass band from the Con. It's culturally appropriate to that space. And Western Sydney needs one as well. That's culturally appropriate to that space. And then you hang those innovation outcomes, economic development outcomes, capacity building outcomes, community development outcomes, education outcomes, out of that one space with that vision. Because I think we can take, not only educate young people in that same space. It has a live music venue, it has a recording space, it has a producer in residence. That's the thing. There's lots of these recording studios in Western Sydney, but there's nobody there running it twelve months of the, with the vision, with the connections, being a real hub for not only the music industry, but the community. Many levels of outcomes I can think. And, you know, um, we had that, we had that, uh, pilot project in Bangstown Arts Centre with Out Loud, a local youth organisation, uh, this year in June, which Bezad was a part of, um, who's also studying his PhD in Wollongong, uh, in music. And we sent it an EOI, we got lots of applications, come and work with me for four sessions. We picked three artists. One was a Lebanese Greek young woman who's just finished at the Con, plays the harp, sings soprano. One was Bezad playing his amazing Persian music. One was a Moroccan musician who had a camel skin, uh, bass amp. And for four sessions, we worked together to create new music. So out of that, we, in five hours, we, we wrote five songs. Um, and then we went on to find it, pare down to a single. We found some stuff. We, we created a music video in four sessions. So in, um, in sixteen hours, we called the ensemble one-six, we created truly a world-class song and ensemble. And I'm saying to people, if we had a space like this, what could we do? If we had that ensemble for four weeks, we could create a whole album, uh, run workshops with the community, uh, run video music courses, have artists involved in the marketing and the video creation, have community involved in all that, the many layers of that, and, and send them around the world to tour. So imagine we do that in one month. We could do ten in one year. We could change the face of contemporary Australian music in one year via this model. Then you add the education outcomes, the community development outcomes, because as part of this, um, pilot as well, we found these amazing musicians, but there was these, uh, three or four young people that weren't as amazing, but they had potential. So I had, I worked with them free of charge in my garage for, for four weeks to develop, to allow them, because I were born here, to allow them to, to investigate their culture, to create new music using that. So there's a gap. If I'm doing it in my garage, imagine if we had a space with community development outcomes, world-class outcomes, education outcomes.
Thank you. Um, so we're gonna need to wrap up there, but thank you, um, Richard and Andrew for your evidence this afternoon. And the secretary will contact you in relation to any questions on notice.